Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being here for our first meeting of our new fiscal year. So today is July the 7th. I would ask that we observe our traditional moment of silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin this evening, I want to extend, I know we had a nice ceremony last Friday, and I want to extend a welcome back to David McCauley, Counselor, I was going to say Counselor-Elect, but he's an official Council member now, so David, welcome to the table. So we look forward to working with you, and I hope you with us. And so let's get the first meeting underway. First, we have under recognized guests, several folks, a few who have signed in, but we're going to go down our agenda first. And I'd like to defer to Chief Kimball with the City Fire Department to administer the official oath of our brand-new probationary firefighter, Lyndon. So, Chief.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight's a great night. We're here to basically celebrate being fully staffed at this point in time. Took a little while, but tonight, Lyndon will be taking his oath to provide service to our community and our county and everywhere we go, so I think you have the oath in your package.
Somewhere.
At the tree service booth.
Yep, I do.
His wife Brittany is here tonight, and his badge on.
No, I don't have it memorized. We just need to find a working pen. Would you join me up here, please? All right. So, you repeat after me, and I'll try to make this as painless as possible, okay? All right, raise your right hand.
Ryan King.
Ryan King?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure I get it right. All right. I, Lyndon Gwynn Ryan King...
I, Lyndon Gwynn Ryan King...
...do hereby declare...
Do hereby declare.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
...the Constitution of the State of West Virginia...
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
...the Charter, ordinances, and resolutions of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia...
The Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia.
Okay. And that...
And that.
...as a member of the Buchanan Fire Department...
As a member of the Buchanan Fire Department.
...my fundamental duty is...
My fundamental duty is...
...to serve the people I swear to protect...
Serve the people I swear to protect.
...to safeguard and preserve life...
To safeguard and preserve life.
...health...
Health.
...and property...
And property.
...against fire and other perils...
Against fire and other perils.
...and to maintain a proficiency...
And to maintain a proficiency.
...and professionalism...
And professionalism.
...in the fire service.
In the fire service.
I recognize the badge of my office...
I recognize the badge of my office.
...as a symbol of public faith and trust...
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
...and I accept so long as I am true...
And I accept so long as I am true.
...to the ethics of the fire service...
To the ethics of the fire service.
...and make these promises...
And make these promises.
...so solemnly...
So solemnly.
...freely...
Freely.
...and upon my honor.
And upon my honor.
Congratulations.
Welcome to the team, Lyndon. Mayor, we've got to be short tonight. He's got a cake to present, since he got his first fires at Buchanan Fire Department tonight, so he has to provide a cake.
Is there anything, the floor is yours, that you want to say to, do you want to introduce who you have with you tonight?
Yeah, I have my wife Brittany here, my, our brother-in-law, Brandon, YG, my sister-in-law, and my mother-in-law, Loretta.
Nice to meet you all. Is there anything you'd like to say to, you've got, you've got your Fire Department here, you've got Chief here...
I don't know what to say.
Well, congratulations, and we are, we're thrilled to have you as a member of the paid staff of the Fire Department, so we wish you well.
Congratulations, and good safe.
All right, congratulations. All right. See you, guys.
They're going to get cake.
Can they break us a piece? Tony Bella, good stuff. All right. All right, next up this evening, and we will, Chief Kimball will report to us here in a little bit on the happenings of the Fire Department, but now we have Robin Oldacre with us, and she is representing the Relay for Life. So, Robin?
Do you have the proclamation?
I do. I know. Okay, it's up to you. You want me to read it, or do you want to take a picture? It's up to you.
You've got to read it.
Oh, I got to read it?
You've got to read it.
Oh, goodness. I like, pictures are worth a thousand words now, so.
We can do both.
The Upsher County Relay for Life is coming up here in just a couple of weeks.
Nine days.
Nine days, so, so quickly approaching, that's right, because normally the first, I think that the first meeting of the month is much closer to the first of the month, so we're almost to the middle already, it's hard to believe. So Robin does a great job with the organization here locally. So this is a proclamation for the Relay for Life of Upsher County, and that is, whereas the people of Upsher County have been affected by the devastating disease of cancer, and whereas Relay for Life is a signature activity of the American Cancer Society, and whereas Relay for Life of Upsher County is not just a fundraiser, it is a unique activity that offers an opportunity to participate in the fight against cancer, to honor cancer survivors and remember those lost to the disease, to build a network of businesses and health organizations to address community cancer issues, and to recruit new volunteers to deliver the American Cancer Society programs and services. And whereas Relay for Life of Upsher County has had a significant presence in this community for the last 25 years, and has touched thousands of residents, and has raised over $2.2 million to help the fight and the battle against cancer. And whereas Relay for Life of Upsher County invites cancer survivors, their caregivers, and the community to the 25th Annual Upsher County Relay for Life on July 16th at Jawbone Park with the theme Cheers to 25 Years. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Robert Neil Skinner III, Mayor of the City of Buchanan, do hereby proclaim the month of July in the year 2022 as Relay for Life Month throughout the City of Buchanan, and I urge all of our individuals, families, businesses, schools, service organizations, churches, and neighbors to unite in the fight against cancer, to honor cancer survivors, and to remember those we have lost to cancer. This given under my hand, an official seal of the City of Buchanan on the 7th day of July 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me sign the thing, and then, and then that way it'll...
Be official.
That's right.
We have set our goal this year, a fundraising goal of $30,000. Not sure that we'd make it. We bypassed it, so we're now, we're setting it for $35,000.
Wow, good work.
What's been, what's been the biggest year of 2025?
That seal right there.
I think it was in the 90s.
All right, there you go, thank you. The floor is yours if you want to talk, if you want to give any updates or answer any questions, so.
I just, there's something that's important to me, is that as we're raising funds, it's something I recently learned, that out of every dollar that is raised, 73 cents of every dollar goes to research, goes to medical research, and also goes towards patient care, whether it's getting them two appointments, whether it's paying for housing, whether it's paying for prosthesis or weeks or anything like that, and only 27 of that goes to administrative costs. So I think that's a pretty good amount that does go, so it's a, it's a worthy fundraiser. Thank you all very much.
Didn't you used to walk 24 hours at one time?
We did, used to walk 24 hours. And now it's, we went down to 12 hours, we went down to 10 hours, and now we're down to four hours.
With this humanity, 24 hours would be difficult.
Yes. Well, the last time we had it was 2019, and when we started it, we started at 4 o'clock and we went to 11, and the temperature was 92, and the heat index was 102. So we're hoping for a little bit, but we still have, even within the four hours, we still have survivor lap, caregiver lap, room in every service, so we're covering everything to just invite you all to come.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, Robin. Okay. We have with us this evening Rep. Dusenberry, who is the District Representative for Congressman Alex Mooney. He is on the agenda, and he has a, he's got a line item this evening, E4, and it's request, Congressman Alex Mooney, constituent services table, and that's August 5th and 6th on Main Street. Rep., do you want to address the council and come talk to us about what, what you've got going on?
Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, distinguished guests, first of all, I'd like to, on behalf of Congressman Alex Mooney, thank you for allowing me to address the Buchanan City Council, and also thank you for allowing us to provide constituent services over many past years and also this summer. Just a real quick, some of you know what office hours are. That is where a representative, a congressman, or a US Senator will set up a location and advertise in the local media about the location, and also help constituents if they have an issue with the federal government that they can possibly be assisted with by their legislator. I was going to request, I've done office hours in the same location in front of Andreck Jewelers during the Strawberry Festival, and we didn't have any issue, and I was going to request to be able to do it again during the August 5th and 6th on Main Street, if possible. I spoke to Mr. Andreck, he said he didn't mind if I sat beside him. I went out there before I came to the meeting today and measured with a tape, and if you need to see those measurements, I can tell you about them. The, out of 146 inches, my footprint will be less than 60 off the wall, and will be right underneath the canopy, right beside Mr. Andreck. He said that he's going to be out there as well. And the congressman just likes to provide constituent services to the citizens whenever possible, and this was going to be a great opportunity and location, and I asked if I could do this, and they said, yeah, sure. So that's why I'm before the council tonight. And I'd like to thank you again for allowing me to bring this forward, and also for all your assistance to me and the congressman when it comes to helping the constituents. Thank you, sir.
Any questions? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you on Main Street.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'll get French fries for CJ, man.
All right. Next up is, we have Jewel Fisher here, and she has a line item on the agenda, which is F1, and Jewel's going to tell us about the request. Jewel, we can bring the microphone to you.
If I sit in one place too long, my leg gets stiff, so I'd rather just stand. Okay. What this is, is I came, I think it was in August or September of last year, asking for money for the law enforcement banquet, and Councilman Thomas asked why I didn't include the fire and EMS. Well, at the time, that was going to be too big of a deal for me to handle, along with my VIPS group, to handle fire, police, EMS, and everything like that. That's my thing. So we split it up. We've done the law enforcement, we've done the, now we're going to do the fire and EMS. So I'm here to ask for the same amount that we had from last year of the $750 that afford to, to buy the food and the plaques and supplies and stuff that I would need for the banquet.
Only if you'll dance with me to this song out front here.
No, sorry. But the...
How about, could I dance?
I'm not up to dancing, Dave, so, no. But the, the menu will be spaghetti and meatballs with toss salad, Italian bread, and dessert furnished by the VIPS group. And the meat sauce, or the sauce, spaghetti sauce, will be the, as most of you probably know, the Bordino Sorella, the Sorella family recipe. So it's bound to be good, so, but I am requesting at least one representative from the City Council to be there to help pass out awards and stuff.
What's the date on this again?
July the 30th.
Dinner included?
Dinner's included.
Mayor, you know, you can come with me.
Randy had a good time last time, so, but that's the only request, the 750, and request for a representative from the council. for a representative from the council to be at the banquet.
So we have a motion by Thomas, a second by Rigger. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries unanimously. We'll have somebody there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if anything changes, I'll be sure to let you know.
I was going to give you the money, just so I didn't have to watch him dance.
I don't have to watch anyway.
That concludes the folks who are on our list. Now we need to go over here to the sign-in. Evelyn, would you like to talk with us this evening?
I can.
Okay.
I'll get the mic.
Well, that's okay. I saw you were here. So, but, so if you would, like you did with the Consolidated Board, if you'd come over to the microphone. So council, we had a conversation at Consolidated Public Works Board. This is Evelyn Post. She is with, she is the Director of Central West Virginia Aging Services on North Spring Street. And Central West Virginia Aging Services approached us about some parking concerns in the North Spring Street parking lot, directly across the street from their establishment. And they also were, came to talk to us about the on-street parking on North Spring Street itself. So the line item that Evelyn would be here to speak to us about is F3. So Evelyn, I've set the table. If you want to kind of talk to us a little bit about the request.
Well, thank you very much for having me back. I think I was here on June 20th in front of the Consolidated Board. And we had a discussion then about the addition of two handicapped parking slots in front of our office, because we do get a lot of client travel in and out, where they're signing up for services. As you all know, we're, we are an in-home services company. We're in 47 counties in West Virginia. Buchanan's our main corporate office. We have offices in Martinsburg, Parkersburg, Charleston, Oak Hill, Sutton, and Fairmont. Of course, Buchanan's our corporate, this is where payroll happens for 600 employees. We have thousands of clients scattered all over the state. And we're growing, we're having to turn away business because we have vacancies for caregivers. So to say that, you know, we're really in need of vital parking spaces that are dedicated. At one time, we had dedicated parking spaces where we paid for it. And we're willing to do that again if, and that was what I had presented on the 23rd, along with the request, to add two handicap parking spaces right in front of our office.
Just for council's consideration and knowledge. So the request that the Consolidated Public Works Board approved to refer to the city council was, if you'll recall, we just recently repaved North Spring Street. We have not yet striped North Spring Street back with parking tick marks, or put any handicap spaces on North Spring Street. And so the request was, when we do that, could we place two handicap spaces on the west side of North Spring Street, which would be the side that's closest to the Central West Virginia Aging Services? The request was passed unanimously by the Consolidated Public Works Board, and referred to the city council for council consideration on that matter. If you'll also recall, we did widen North Spring Street enough to create parking on the Chinese restaurant side of the street. So we are going to net additional parking spaces on-street that would not be handicap accessible. So the Consolidated Public Works Board felt that allocating two spaces on North Spring Street would not be a problem at all. But, so, because it's, because it hasn't been striped yet, and it does affect a city street, we wanted to bring it to the city council for council's final consideration of the request. So I would open it up to any council discussion or questions specific to this matter before we talk about the parking lot across the street.
So Jerry, you were in that Consolidated, I don't think, if you had an opportunity to look this over and make this work?
There was, there was already one handicap space at the top of the parking area there. So that's, yeah, there's two in the, there's two in the first two spaces in the top part of the parking lot, directly behind the Chinese restaurant as well. So, so as far as on-street, again, if you're considering this, it can work as long as, if we get the contractor to paint the appropriate markings on the pavement. But like I said, that's up to you all as to whether you want another one on. We have, let me put it this way, we have enough ADA spaces for the parking spaces on-street as required, but this is to, for...
Increase by one.
So, yes. So, but as far as regulatory spaces, we have enough regulatory spaces currently.
Meet the standards.
Right. Yes, sir.
With our, with our client base, though, it makes sense to have a few more.
And with these, our two-hour parking, just like the handicap spots go with the two-hour on the streets, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
I think we should.
And, and they're not, again, just like any other parking space, it's not designated just for the use of...
When you brought this up, and we talked about it, I supported the dance. And if you want to bring this, I'll make the motion to accept this.
All right. I will, we'll entertain the motion that CJ has made to approve F3, and we'll entertain David Thomas's second. Is there any further discussion on that matter? Hearing done, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so that line item is passed. Now, you had also brought some concern to us about the parking lot across the street, in that your, some of your employees were, because of their physical challenges, they were unable to find close enough parking to the business to get to work. Because that parking lot is a open-for-all parking lot. It does not have any, there are currently no spaces in there that are paid for. All the spaces in there are, are open, and are unlimited, except for the hours of 3:00 to 6:00 a.m. So anybody that works in the downtown, or is visiting the downtown, or patronizing the downtown can park in, in that lot. So what Mrs. Post brought to us was a request to, if you're familiar, if you can think with me just a second, the, the area specifically behind the Chinese restaurant, but opposite the wall. So if you're driving north on Spring Street, and you look immediately to the right, right behind the Chinese restaurant, it wouldn't be along the wall of the Chinese restaurant, it would be right opposite of it. And those cars would park facing north. She was, brought a proposal to see if we could designate those nine spaces, or a portion of those nine spaces, as Central West Virginia Aging Parking only. And of course, she did say, she told, she did propose to the Consolidated Public Works Board that the Central West Virginia Aging Services would be willing to pay for those individual spaces from their corporate level. So that, did I capture that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that is where, that's, and that's where that discussion was. There is nothing on the agenda for tonight to make that a reality. We just wanted to bring the discussion here to council. The Consolidated Public Works Board was, understood the request, but also understood that we have worked hard to establish the parking plan that the city has in the downtown area. And so let's open that discussion there. And Evelyn, if there's anything you need to add to my table set, please go ahead, or the council can begin with asking questions or offering comment.
When was the last year that you all actually paid for parking down there, and how much did you pay per month?
I'm thinking the rates were raised, and we were paying $30 to $40 per month per slot. And we paid six months at a time in advance. And it was prior to the kiosk being built. You remember when the town built the nice kiosk there? That's when we ended up losing our paid parking.
That was before we changed the ordinance. I think our concern on Consolidated was, if this accommodation is made, that any and all other entities, businesses, organizations, we would have a difficult time denying a request from them. And I know we've had requests in the past for people wanting parking spaces in front of their business on the streets designated to them. And I think we had a temporary pandemic parking situation, but for the businesses, we're doing takeouts only, or for customers. But I think, you know, my concern is that the policy, no policy is perfect for everyone. But we've worked diligently for years, literally years, to try to hammer out a non punitive parking system for our community. And I think if we, if we do make accommodations, then we better be prepared to be, other more requests. And where does it, where, you know, how do we manage that? And so that's my concern. I understand that, you know, maybe, I've never seen that park, parking lot completely full. But I do know that, you know, the farther the spots that are last open are the ones that are farthest away from, you know, people coming in. But that's pretty much my concern.
Yeah, I agree, you know, I agree with CJ on the fact that, you know, we're not looking at revenue being made off of our parking spaces. We're looking at providing parking spaces for the people that come to Buchanan to use the services, number one. But number two, I think most businesses serve senior citizens. I know yours specifically does. I know that's a specific nature of your business, but there would be a case to be made for any other business to come to say the same thing. That we would like to maybe designate certain spaces for our clientele, or even certain spaces for the senior citizens that come to our clientele. And how do you say no there, if you say yes over here? I just, I would be very concerned with starting to cut out parts of the parking lots and parking spaces that we do have for specific businesses.
I understand your concerns. Never hurts to ask.
Yes, don't get it. I agree. How many would you be requesting?
Well, I was requesting, although we have more employees, I was requesting up to eight.
But you're looking for the, for your employees?
Yes.
Not, not necessarily clientele, correct?
And, well, you know, we have outstation caregivers that report to that office, and bring in time sheets, and pick up plans of care for their clients. And we also have client families coming in. So I just thought it would be a wonderful opportunity for those, because many, many times, they tell, they're telling us, when they come throughout the day, that there's just, you know, there's some days those parking lots are packed full. And I know you can never gauge, you know, the busy days, but we're busy. And we have about 150 outstation employees bringing in time sheets, picking up OSHA supplies. And that happens every single day. We have people living throughout Upsher County, living in Lewis County, living in Barber County, Upsher County, that report to this corporate office. So, you know, we are a very busy office.
I need to echo Mr. Sanders and Mr. Rowling's concerns regarding the parking, but I have another question. Jerry, you might need to answer this. My ADA memory's kind of slipping right at this point. But is there an hours of operation for your business? And is it something that could accommodate parking? I'm just asking. I mean, could you have handicap parking 8:00 to 4:30, just for an example?
Once, once that is assigned as an ADA space or handicap space?
It is an ADA space. So, so it's going to be 24/7, seven days a week.
I think there's seven days a week.
So there's, there's no time slots that you can assign for accessibility.
Our office operations are 8:00 to 4:00. And in my initial letter, we wouldn't even, if we were paying for those positions, or those slots, we would not care who used them.
After hours.
After hours. On weekends, we're not there. All the major holidays, we are not there. This is our corporate staff that utilizes, and clients, and caregivers.
But you said to have a license plate for the sticker on the initial part there, correct?
Are there any other questions or comments for Mrs. Post?
I would like to add a problem. I have an administrative assistant who's been with me almost 20 years. She retired, she came back two days a week. It really pushes her handicap to walk from where the, because she's typically there, 8:00 to 4:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And she cannot park in the parking spot in front of the office, because it has a two-hour limit. And she's gotten warning tickets. We understand, you have rules. But right now, I just feel like our needs as a handicap and elderly organization are not being met in terms of what, what we could be doing. And I just wanted that for the record.
Has your company explored providing maybe a shuttle service from other parking lots that aren't used as heavily? You know, transportation? Your employees come to work same time each day?
Pretty much 8:00 to 4:00.
Yeah.
No, we have not considered that. Right now, we have 200 vacancies for caregivers. And if you can find employees, that's more than we can do. I mean, it's, it's a major, major employment issue.
Do you, do you look for a certain age for your employees to provide these services?
They have to be under Medicaid. We, we do several programs. We have two Medicaid programs. We, we have a huge contract with the VA. So we serve lots of veterans. We do private pay. We have a lot of private pay citizens right here in this county that, that purchases our services. We also honor long-term care contracts for in-home services. So we do a variety of services. And...
Robbie, I, Mayor, I would suggest we table this for now, because I don't think we're going to come to a resolution of this this evening. And I think that it, you know, something that should be looked at in the next month, as to, is there any way we can accommodate some of the requests that they're asking for? I mean, I think it's a fine organization. And, you know, we can do something to help them. I think that would be appropriate. But I also agree with what CJ had said. When you open this up, you know, where do you draw the line? I've had the same sort of opinion on organizations that ask us for financial support. And we do that occasionally. But again, where do you draw the line? And I would just suggest that we table it for now.
Well, as I mentioned, we do not have this as a line item for specific action tonight. It was just meant to be a discussion with the council to make you aware of Mrs. Post's concerns that were brought to the Consolidated Public Works Board. I do want to observe two things. One, just to let you know, I did speak with the Executive Director of the Upsher County Development Authority, and asked her if there could be any communication to the third floor. Development Authority and asked her if there could be any communication to the third floor of that building because they, the Development Authority has a designated parking area at the end of South Spring Street. That lot that, and I think we discussed this at Consolidated Public Works Board, but just for the community's understanding, the lot where the Latham, sorry, I'm not trying to cut you off, but, and, but the lot that is down at the end of Spring Street next to Lenora's Frame Shop where the Latham House used to be, the Development Authority put that lot in. That is not a City of Buchanan lot. That is a privately held Development Authority lot that was required of their grant to provide parking for the, all of the occupants that would be for the building on the corner of Main Street and Spring Street. So I did speak with the Development Authority Director one week ago tomorrow about if there could be any communication done to try to encourage or to require parking that, from their tenants that, you know, to use their lot. She said that she would, she would certainly advance that. And I told her that anyone, that myself or Jerry or a council member would be happy to come and talk with her or the third floor about the importance of parking down on Spring, at the end of Spring Street. So that's one. Two, I did want to make sure the council's aware, there is an ADA parking space that is in the lot directly across the street from the Central West Virginia Aging, kind of behind the Chinese Restaurant, that is a handicap or accessible spot. There is a spot there and that is all day. They can park there all day. There is, and I know that there was some confusion you and I and Tammy had talked about. Because that kiosk, that at one point, that near parking lot was a two-hour turnaround. It's not. All of that on north of the Chinese Restaurant to the Salvation Army is open all day long. It's just not open from three to six AM unless you have a permit to live downtown. And that's for the emptying of the garbage dumpsters back there and to clean the parking lot. So there is a spot behind Chinese Restaurant that has been designated for ADA parking. Now, anybody can use it. That's the thing. It, because it's parked, the way it's set up now, anybody can use it. But if no one's using it, she is certainly able to use it and use it all day without any warning or violation. So, and I asked, I asked Brad Hawkins to take down those signs that, there's a few left that we missed that say two hours because it's not a two-hour area. So there's, there's been some confusion there. But I agree with Mr. Thomas. I think that we probably, it wouldn't hurt probably to have a little focus group just to talk about maybe, you know, the parking plan that we have. I think, I think what we have done, and I think Councilman McCauley would agree because he was mayor whenever this thing was finally passed, a lot of work went into creating the parking plan that we have. We have 500 free spaces in the downtown area. There is no other community of any size anywhere that has 500 or any hundred level number of free parking spaces in the downtown area. You go to Charleston, you go to Beckley, you go to Morgantown, you go anywhere else and you're paying heavily for parking. I think that there are meters in Charleston now that literally give you 30 minutes, which is crazy. But, and we want, and they wonder why their downtown isn't in the shape that everybody else is in or ours is in with the free parking. Because we, we know that the free parking, it encourages business development in the downtown, which is what our entire goal was, was to create a business-friendly environment downtown. So, but with that, there are things that change over time and issues that come up. So I would support having a small focus group maybe meet in a couple of weeks to just, you know, invite you and anybody, as you saw at the Consolidated Public Works Board, we had some concerns over parking at Jawbone Park. So perhaps if we're going to look at this, we look at this from a holistic approach and just have a discussion.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I think so too.
And I just appreciate you so much even looking at our requests.
Sure. Well, I mean, and you're an important...
You've done a great job with your streets. We love new streets and...
Yeah. You're an important business downtown as are all of our businesses and we want to make sure that we're trying to meet the needs of the business community because that's how the more businesses we have in our downtown, the better, the better of a community we are. So.
Well, thank you so much for your time and your suggestion for the business.
Sure.
I look forward to that and maybe something good will come out of it.
Mr. Schneider, could I add one thing?
Sure.
When we looked at the Colonial Theater acquisition about six years ago, one of the things that was very attractive to acquiring that property was that abundance of parking in the back lot. We had an event that just lasted a couple of hours last Saturday and there were probably 20 or so vehicles that frequented the event that used that lot because it's right around the corner from the Colonial. So I think that's another element that we need to be cognizant of is that while we do have those 500 spots, you know how it is, the people that drive around Walmart for 15 minutes trying to get the one closest to the door. There's that part of human reality. So let's be mindful of that as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good evening and a good weekend.
You all have a great evening.
Same to you. Same to you, be safe.
Ron, you men, you circled yes slash no with a question mark. Would you like to address this with anything?
The only thing I'd like to say is about the parking issue?
Come to the microphone, please.
It's not working.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Oh.
Is it off there, or?
It's off. It's not working.
It's not working?
It's not working.
Okay.
That mic doesn't work?
It certainly doesn't.
You've got it off.
Oh.
Is there a way to turn it on?
Yeah, you can turn it on from the speakers in the house.
You've got, you've got that up there.
Oh, you've got the thing. That's all right.
All right.
I'll just talk longer with it on. Drive it off. Parking for ADA handicap is an issue here and I am at the older end of the baby boomers, January of 1946. And the ones that are coming after me are going to have a difficult time of placing themselves in a parking place for their work. People are working longer now than they have been before. They're not retiring as early, perhaps because they're not able to, they have to work longer. But as they get older, they're limited as to where they can walk to from their, to their place of employment. And I see this nothing but becoming more of an issue than, than something that's reconciled here tonight or tomorrow or the next couple of weeks. It's going to become an issue within the coming years. And you might start thinking about what these parking lots, maybe some of them should have two or three more handicapped right closer into the town area for the citizens to park. And that's my only opinion on that. And I, I reserve my other comments for to see what else comes up tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Stay tuned.
Robin, you snuck in after we picked up the sheets. Is there anything you'd like to discuss with us this evening?
No, sir. I'm just hanging out.
Okay. We've got some council alumni here tonight, so. Okay. We are down to our department and public works, public board, public board reports. Randy's got it working now, so.
Time for Jerry's report.
First up is our public works director, Jerry Arnold. We have this, and you'll notice for reference, we have the numbers on the agenda where the department directors have some skin in the game. So we have taken care of F3, so F12 is something that Jerry would like to discuss with us tonight as part of his report, but we will defer to him to tell us what he has to tell us. Welcome.
Good evening.
You could have sent another couple of minutes back there.
Yeah.
Brought him up too soon.
That's how it gets. Other director, I'm working on the new things that I'm working on is the Madison Street project and hopefully with an approved design that I'll be able to start demo on that first of next week is the plan, some of the preliminary demo. And with that, just to let the public know that I will be hard barricading that lot off during construction. So starting Monday morning, I'll be barricading access to that lot completely off because while we're working in there, we cannot have any vehicles parking.
So should we notify, just to jump in, should we notify the businesses that are, have been using them?
Wouldn't be a bad idea, Randy. You know, we, I've had conversation with the one business primarily using it and told them that as soon as we started construction, that I did not give them definitive date. And again, I'm hoping Monday that that takes place, but...
But I don't think the Development Authority lot is restricted more than welcome to park there. I don't think that the organization has any objection to that.
I was down there yesterday and there was three cars in the morning, four in the afternoon that were parking there. And I think of those, there was probably three that was for the one business there. So, so I don't think it's a huge issue, but I just wanted to make everyone aware that, you know, we've got barricaded off for safety.
Yep.
The street department, we've installed the new street lights and we continue to work on those sidewalk projects that I've reported on previously. Under the sewer department, they continue to work on the West Virginia Westland Sewer Project. Water department, happy to announce Mike McCauley retired after 10 years of service with the water board, was up there till last Thursday for that. And then in waste, Donnie Lambert retired after 22 years of service to the waste collection board and we had a little get together on Wednesday of last week. And just congratulations to those two employees. And just like Mrs. Post was saying, they're getting harder and harder to replace in today's climate. I'll skim, just skim over Jay's report a little bit here for you. You've got the, you've got the long version, but four of the six generators have been installed and the Brook Street generator already has a malfunction that's requiring some repair after 43 hours in service. Of course, it is under warranty, but again, you wait that long for something, you expect it to work a little longer, 43 hours.
Better now than when you need it.
Absolutely. And better now than when it's out of warranty. I've seen that a lot there. The grant number one, the Born Jack has been done up there at the railroad crossing to get the conduits underneath the railroad for that generator for the, for the raw water intake. And they, Jay's asking for an extension on that because of delivery dates for materials. And he's got a verbal approval for that. The community assistant visit, I think I had reported on that last meeting that Jay had FEMA folks coming in for a visit. They came in and went over floodplain related projects from the past five years with Vincent and Teresa and Jay. And they'll have a final report, findings to the mayor at one completion. So that's all I have, Mayor, unless there's questions for me.
Let's talk about the F12.
You see, council, you see the map up there, paste it over, well, taped over the Stalker Youth and Community Center rendering and I'll let Jerry walk us through it.
Well, currently, just, just, I went down yesterday, found some, found the property corners and just trying to verify measurements. And the good news is these actually can extend. These are about 42 feet, so that helps us a little bit on this angle parking. So that'll give us a few more parking spaces down there. We still do not have title to this, this little portion.
So that's pending, the title on that portion of the back?
The mayor has it in possession.
Yeah. I'm gonna let Randy take over just a second. You brought, probably still be talking about it when I get back. I have that, that important document that we've been waiting on from Ms. Miller about the acquisition of the, that little corner piece, but I walked off, out of my desk at home without it. I'll be right back.
Yeah, I think just somebody have it to...
I drive fast, don't tell chief.
Not that, chief.
So with that, currently, 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 we are, we are proposing this. We are not proposing these shelters at this time. I will say, like I said, I was down there, did the preliminary measurements of, I'm thinking as far as electrical, we have, already have a service here. I'm thinking of just bringing three 200 amp services in. The old bank service came off of Wickham Street here in the hole with an underground conduit lead to the center of that lot. Thinking about catching all of these green spaces with a 200 amp service. One probably here, one here, and one on this corner. That way we're feeding the whole area and are able to do that. The other part of the project that's really not identified is I think that a lot of the centralized area should be permeable pagers like we're doing in Jawbone. That way we have a multi-use area, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
A multi-use area in the center here that can be used for vendors or bounce houses, whatever, but has the ability and the resiliency to be able to drive on and continue to be a green space. With that being said, what I'm looking at right now is again, not only are our employees hard to come by, but also contractors. And I thought I had a contractor kind of on the hook for a lot of our stuff in and down, some sidewalks and was planning on turning loose on this and the PSC lot, but he is currently booked up. So it looks like I'm going to start the process and I'm working with another one to maybe do some site work, so it's probably going to be kind of piecemeal stuff between city employees and contracted to get this in the public safety lot.
Well, if we get the demolition and utilities in and maybe degrading, then, you know, that's... Now, do you want, is there going to be a sanitary?
There will be, there'll be a sanitary tap down here. That sanitary tap will have a, we will run a trunk line straight up the middle here. And again, with the thought process, just like in Jawbone, we set up vendors, we need to have ability to get gray water to a sanitary sewer. So again, similar to what we do, what we've done in Jawbone with both water connections, sanitary connections, as well as electrical connections to be able to set up vendors in different venues within that. I view it just like we were discussing with the Stalker community building. It being a multi-use space. And, you know, with that being open and that open green space and having this parking around, that could be utilized for an awful lot of things, as well as just overflow for what's going on here at Jawbone.
And instead of those proposed three pavilions, discussed more of a rectangle, larger one at the head of the, right up in here. You know, might be with a hip roof, so if it rains, you know, you could have vents. The lingering bathroom question, you know, as in would they, would they be there and what's going on, you know, there's still challenge, we're challenged because of, for multiple reasons, right? The flood system and flood plain.
It would be extremely difficult to do something here, down in here particularly. You would have to be, if we're even considered now, something by caring on resident, more residential for public restroom. And again, you know my thoughts on permanent public restroom facilities.
Right. We've had the conversation.
So I think we're, I think we're better served to look at portable, if you want to be, if you want to upscale that a little bit, have restroom trailers that are outfitted, which you can do finishes, you know, you can put granite countertops on.
I'm a cordial guy myself.
Me too.
Now, the concrete that, you know, this driveway used to extend all the way through to Lincoln Street, you're going to demolish that out even though we're not planning to do anything up there?
Yes. All of this, all of the, all of the concrete, that's the first step.
All the concrete and the asphalt in that lower lot.
All the block top in the lower lot has to come out. Then the next step is if I can get, get my contractor who has a dozer to come out. The next step is going to be is get this grade and this elevation because there is a retaining wall here. So we'll get this grade in, get it right. And we have to keep in mind, there's a large diameter, 48 inch storm sewer that runs through here, so we have to be particularly focused on removing cover matter.
So I want to draw a script here and ask Rodney a question. As far as amplifying or reinforcing the sound out of Jawbone Park, obviously there's not under... obviously, there's not underground wiring in Jawbone to take sound or speakers over to that. But do we Bluetooth it over or could we?
I can hardwire.
Huh?
I've got a chase.
You do have a chase?
We've put a chase in right here. We have a chase that goes from this corner of Jawbone to this corner.
Would that be something you consider, Rodney, when we're?
Yeah, wired is always better.
Absolutely. I didn't know we had a chase in there.
I can run you fiber, whatever you want.
Okay. All right. I think we need to consider that because that was one.
The presidential, we're getting closer to where people live.
Well, I understand, but I think we bump it, we can help bump it a little bit there when we're, when we're having things.
We have some Mexican speakers, Chilean speakers.
We could do something like on Main Street, smaller speakers.
We currently have, we currently have speaker water in the, the light poles at Jawbone.
Okay. All right. I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking now that we're doing it, you know, just reinforcing the force, it's just a little bit more, yeah, yes.
I have another question. We were Festival Friday, last week, week before last. Is it, now I'm gonna chase the rabbit here. Is it possible to put a crosswalk in with those pedestrian signs, like in front of the post office or on the Florida Street side of Jawbone so the cars will stop?
There's discussion about that.
It had a portable one last year.
I watched a.
I thought it was still in.
I watched a couple of parents struggling with their children in cars approaching.
We didn't think that.
I didn't think it.
It's still in.
Well, usually.
I'm sorry. CJ and I were talking, we had a portable one that, that you would, you would take out during the events and then take it back in.
Does it work?
I think it got run over a couple of times.
We're ready to start taking bets.
Right, right. So I will check, Jack, on that.
It's a hazard.
I will, I will check to that note to make sure that it is still in the storage room and then we'll have to work on getting it out.
I think we've already addressed the issue that if we're having large events in Jawbone, Madison Street will be closed.
Yeah, Florida, you're going back and forth to Florida Street, you're talking.
No, I'm talking about Madison.
Yeah.
But Madison's still open. It hasn't been closed yet.
We've closed it, but we closed it for strawberry fat.
Right. Festival Fridays is where I, I watched a couple of families with small children parking in the lot as it is now, crossing the street. And there's no crosswalk. Cars, you're lucky if cars.
We're still talking about it, Mayor.
This, this right here is the identified crosswalk for that. And this, actually, it's not real defined here, but this is a pedestrian wall all the way through to Lincoln Street.
On top of the storm.
That being said, at that point in time, we can identify this as, as a crosswalk, Jack, when we do this lot.
Is there anything we could do in the meantime?
In the meantime, in the meantime, well, in the meantime, this is gonna be closed, so there'll be no parking.
Okay.
So, so that should alleviate some of the problem. And then once we, once we identify this as a crosswalk.
Yeah, well, that's a problem there because that's very narrow.
Yes.
Nine feet more there, less width than South Springs.
Yes.
And you put a one-foot sign in the middle.
I'm not advocating for a sign.
You're gonna have to have.
I'm advocating.
You can't make it.
I'm advocating just painting ladder bars and putting signs up at each side.
Yeah.
Caution pedestrian crosswalk. I don't think we need to put something in the center of the street.
I, I think you need to put that, even a second one down there at the end of that corner, no, on the other end, clear down, right in there. Cause everybody uses that lower parking lot to park. And that's where they do their crossing most of the time. And while we're at it, are we gonna do anything to improve that parking lot? We gonna do anything to improve that parking lot?
What parking lot?
That one right there.
That's the.
That's the, oh, so that, that case, the old encompasses that other one we already have.
Farmer's Market.
Okay, okay.
That, that, this takes in the whole.
But yeah, they're using that parking lot. It's full on Friday night. So the crosswalk needs to be near that parking lot.
I'd move that we approve F12?
Second. All right, we have a motion by CJ, a second by Jack. Is there any further discussion? For the media, you probably already talked about this, but for the media's perspective, those, those, those red, I mean, like, school erasers, that, that, it's not 100%, like, that, that's just an idea. That's not gonna happen.
Right. That's, and, and again, that, right now.
We're not talking about that.
This is green space.
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, well, actually, this.
That's a house.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a green space.
This is green space. I don't wanna get that, no.
Yeah, don't take it.
This is a house right now. That's just a preliminary drawing.
Any further discussion? Hearing the need for an I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ron?
Jack, you're talking about the people going across the street there on Madison Street now. That's just starting to be a problem since Sweet Delicious has opened up there on Friday nights. The kids are going across to get their ice cream and coming back. And that is a dangerous spot. So as a citizen, you know, that's something y'all might consider putting big stripes, you know, and everything for, you know, walkways. Let cars slow down to 15 miles an hour through there. It is dangerous.
The corner of Florida and Madison, we're going to have that, the official ADA.
Yes.
So maybe we put crosswalks on all four there?
We have the ramps for that. That's what I was gonna say here, CJ. When this becomes a crosswalk, we have to put a ramp in this sidewalk. Because, you know, if we're identifying this as a pedestrian crosswalk, it has to be ADA compliant as a crosswalk. And again, it's kind of unique. I think I've, I've said before, and we talked about this one over here.
Right.
Usually a crosswalk, and any traffic engineer will tell you, the mid-block crosswalk is not a good design. You have traffic control devices, stop signs. So traffic's, the traffic already has to stop. A mid-block, they're not. So, you know, even, even with that, there is a danger of, of pedestrian vehicular confrontation because of, there's no traffic control points there. So, so with that, like I said, we have to do a ramp here, but it's still not, a crosswalk here is not as safe as a crosswalk here.
Well, we can, we can hammer out the details of where the crosswalks go. What we're looking at tonight is the, is the conceptual design across the street. So.
Right.
Yeah.
It's done and fast.
It was easy.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, Ron?
The council still has a discretionary fund that they can spend on items that's needed very much. And I think you should invest in a laser pointer so that when somebody is discussing a map or something on there, they can sit back here, use the pointer, and it wouldn't be covered up completely so that Katie can't see what's going on.
They just need a bigger map or a smaller one.
Clearly.
Katie's getting older. Her eyesight's not as good. I'm not gonna, I'm not, we're not gonna use city funds for that. If we do that, I'll just go to Wally Road and buy one myself. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed. Motion carries. I might have done that. I don't remember. So, okay. So, okay, we've got F12 completed. Anything else, Jerry? You sat down. I'm assuming not.
Sir, why can you not save it all?
Okay. Finance Director, Amber. You have a lot of things on here to, to talk about.
Yeah, but it's not as exciting as a parking lot. So I won't be here very long. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So we ended our fiscal year, our year ended June 30th. So we have a lot to do here at the first meeting with revisions of budgets and updates of numbers. General Fund Money Market Checking ended with $1,070,943 and their, their CD was at $86,524. So that left your balance on hand at 630, $1,157,467. So I'll get into that more when we get down into the revision. Your historic landmark savings, $3,027. Stalker Youth Center Capital Campaign, $446,441 with the $12,000 pledge. Coltech's $58,423. Municipal stabilization, $915,000. Blood Control, $78,276. Consolidated Public Works Board, $170,689. And the cemetery CD at $235,257. Sales tax is at $1,036,333. And the American Rescue Plan account is at $2,306,835. So we received that second tranche of ARPA, American Rescue funding, in the amount of $1,192,175. So the total received since last July is that $2,384,000, but we had some interest booked on that. Just to note, we've expended $79,000 through the end of June 30th for engineering and design work on the six identified projects. And that was a reminder, that's Taylor Street's sanitary sewer, Taylor Street Stormwater Jawbone Run Storm Study, Stormwater Study. Tenerton's Water Storage Tank and Tenerton's Booster Station. Jerry mentioned that the employees that he noted in Waste and Water that retired, Kathy Holt of the office is actually retiring tomorrow, tomorrow with 22 years. So we want to thank all of those employees for their long service to the city. At the last meeting, this new Stalker Youth and Community Center building was talked about and there was a question on interest rates. And I did check with USDA to get a rate that they have right now, and it's at 3.25 right now. Looks like that might hold till about September. Just as a kind of a community note that you might enjoy, we received, we've been receiving a lot of good compliments about our flowers this year. One to note is a lady from Huntington brought her elderly mother who has vision problems to town. And she came in and thanked us for that because of vibrant colors her mother could actually see. So she thanked us for that. That's what I have until we get down into the other items, Mayor.
Well, given how we like to do, let's go, let, let's, while you're, while you're there, let's just talk about them. E5, under the consent agenda, is a lease renewal agreement for the Buchanan River Public Access Site. Walk Trail Lane between the City of Buchanan and the State of West Virginia Department of Commerce Division of Natural Resources.
Yeah, just to clarify that, it's a lease that we already had. It is up, it's a 22-year lease. So this is to renew it for 22 years. And it's that boat access, that boat access down there.
Okay. We will go ahead then and just approve that when we do the consent agenda as a whole, but now that you've talked to us about it. F4, we've got the approval of policy organizations' request for financial support. Mr. Sanders, I know, has some thoughts on this as he's the one that has been the architect behind it and yourself. So we'll set the table here. What, what this is for council's consideration is, we, we know that we have a lot of outside entities come to the city council to request funding throughout the year. And to, for our organizational standpoint, it really helps us and it, and it makes things, it organizes things for us if we have a kind of a rubric to follow. We have a, a policy in place that, that organizations would have to follow in order to gain funding from, from the city. Because we, we wanna be intelligent and we, and we wanna be careful with tax dollars that we would provide to organizations. But we also know that in this community, we're a very active community and we understand and we support a lot of entities and organizations that wanna do some good things here in town. We just wanna make sure that we have a button-down policy that protects us and the organization that we are working with. So with that, I wanna turn it over to Mr. Sanders and Andy to further discuss it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I first come across this when I started doing a little bit of a tour around central West Virginia, talking to other municipalities and counties concerning Wansby. And because we're gonna be generating a huge amount of economic dollars and impact, not only in Buchanan and Upshire County, but I know that Lewis County, Harrison County, Barbry County, Braxton County will all benefit because we're utilizing housing, restaurants, catering services, et cetera, et cetera. So all of those communities are going to benefit from the World Association of Marshes Show Bands when we have it here in 2023. So it only made sense to go and do two things. Number one was to inform them about the details of the event because I didn't want people in Harrison County, Lewis County, Randolph County, and so on, excuse me, just saying, I, we've heard of it, we don't know anything about it. So I've visited all the counties, met with county commissions, met with the Economic Development Authority Directors and the presidents of the Chamber of Commerce, and spoken to all of the CDB directors through Zoom calls. At the same time, because of the amount of benefit, financial benefit the other areas will receive, I've asked for support, financial support from those areas as well. And I, and have, we have been granted some financial support from some of those counties. But in doing the process, there was a litmus test that I had to go through. And I had to submit the funding request that was required. The first one kind of blew me away because it was a couple of hours of work for me to put it all together, but it made sense after I finished it. And I felt better prepared about going in and actually submitting the request once I did finish that application or request because it made me think about dotting my i's, crossing my t's, and actually having a purposeful presentation and to explain to them why this funding made sense, why it would help the area, what would, we would use it for, what collaborative efforts would take place because of it, so on and so forth. And I just felt that it's something that we lacked here. You know, we just kinda, you know, we, we listen to the requests, we talk about the requests, but we really don't know in many instances, much about the organization itself and what its roots are. You know, is it a 501(c)(3)? What are the other elements of that, that organization? How are they financially set currently? You know, are they, are they just getting by by the skin of their teeth? Or are they actually, you know, fluid? Do they have a lot of assets already built up? And that's not a bad thing. I mean, we still might support them if they do because we want longevity of these organizations and their, the good causes they have. But this just helps us do our due diligence and find out about the events we're actually funding. Because unfortunately, sometimes we say yes to a funding request, and if I were asked the next day, I might be hard pressed to actually say what it was gonna be used at the end of the day. This allows us to have that information.
So I will say that when I first looked at this four pages of information, it seems a little onerous. But on number eight of the application process and additional requirements, funds awarded by the city council during the March budget approval will be available for activities starting July 1st. So this would mean that you have to be a year ahead in your request.
And that's generally what happens when you know that, for instance, the Comfort Roach fans that come in, they do a presentation to you. That's discussed in the budget session and that's put in the budget.
Right. And number 10, funding requests may not be awarded in its entirety.
That's only, yeah, giving you the discretion if you think they're requesting 10,000 and you're going to say, well, we might be able to give you 5,000.
May not. I, I thought it said bust, okay.
No, and, and just CJ to follow up on that, my very first presentation that happened, I gave an amount that I was requesting. Commissioner said, let's approve this smaller amount. Another commissioner said, let's bump that up a little bit. They had their discussion. So we ended up not getting one requested. And, you know, it hit me then that, yeah, we don't have to just, you know, always find everything 100%. If we feel like, you know, something we should take baby steps with and just partially fund the request this year, maybe look at it, see the success and what kind of activity it brings to our community, we can consider maybe bumping that up the next year.
Yeah. I've kind of thought, and when you mentioned people coming in and giving presentations and us kind of, same as last year, same as last year, that, you know, again, having the information that's requested in these four pages is going to give you a lot different view of that organization than generally what we've been hearing in kind of a marketing overview. And I thought, you know, if we really, in addition to this, if we really wanted it, you know, so we have some designated person to go. you know, we have some designated person to go look into the organization or the entity, but...
Well, I mean, they're going, they would have to supply certain documents. Like if they are a 501(c)(3), they need that determination letter from the IRS proving that they are that.
Right.
And then, of course, then we're asking for some financial information. One of the things, I have some things underlined, and I've gotten some feedback from a couple of council members. So this is clearly just a draft for you to continue to review and determine. But do you want to assign a committee to review these applications as they come in? The other thing is, on number five, awards can be making up no more than fifty percent of their projected revenues. That we want to think about. Do you want to, if we either the sole supporter of that, do you want that to be us? Awards are paid to the city as a reimbursement. Do you want them to expense the items and then we reimburse it for them? Or just take it for, you know, granted that they're going to do it and report back to us if they paid the vendors properly?
Well, and I think too, you know, in a couple of organizations I've discussed this with, that this is coming, it would be prudent of them to come back and give us a follow-up report to council so that council feels, council knows where the money was spent. And that's probably going to help council determine if the request is going to happen again next year. I think we would remember if there was a follow-up report. If there's no follow-up report, then we, you know, council may not be as forthcoming with the financial support as they were the first time. We don't know that. But it just, the more communication, I think the overarching theme here is the more communication with council, the better.
If the organization paid for the, whatever this is, an event or whatnot, and then came back and wanted reimbursement for, and proved that their payment, that would be part of a follow-up report.
Sure.
Saying, hey, we're here, we did it, here's what we spent. Can we draw our requested funds down?
Yeah.
Okay, say for instance, if somebody requests a twenty thousand dollars for something, and we decide to give it to them, do we not need to know down the road what they used that money for?
That's what.
That's what this is, yeah. This shows, they will be providing us a report of where they anticipate that money going and for what. And then afterwards, it would be good if they would come back and say, this is what we spent the money on, this is how this helped us. And that way, it just creates kind of an open line of communication with us and them so that as they continue to ask for funding requests, it helps us justify to the taxpayers what, while we're doing it, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of council members have already kind of filled in some information. They would like to have something added that if you're requesting, especially in an off, in an off time, not at a budget session, that it would only be maybe considered if the funds were even available, that it would may not even be considered at all if funds aren't available.
So we have the VIPS here tonight. Would the VIPS undergo, have to provide this information?
I think so. I mean, they're kind of in a gray area, they're part of...
The VIPS should be considered an arm of the city, right?
Yeah, but you know, to me, in the police department budget, there are items that Matt asks for, for VIPS. I would think that he would take those into consideration in a budget session.
I agree.
And I think something like this could still be completed, but they might just put, you know, they might have a shorter version or they might be able to NA a few things.
Well, like, okay, for example, like Jewel came this evening, she requested seven hundred fifty thousand, or seven hundred fifty... No, it's a big party. Who wants to come to a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar barbecue? McCauley said he's cooking. So, does that still make you want to come, Mike? So anyway, so she came and requested seven hundred fifty dollars. If she knows she's, you know, that was before we discussed any of this. But now, moving forward, she might know that she needs to come in March. She knows that this is going to be something she wants to do every year. It would be built into the budget discussion there, because VIPS, as you said, has a line item in our budget through the Buchanan Police Department. So I think it could, within the city arms, it's going to be a little bit different, because there are going to be things that come up in the fire budget, or in the fire service and in the police service that are, hey, we didn't anticipate this, or the cost has gone up, or we need to fix this. That goes under, that falls under the city organization, our responsibility. This is strictly for outside entities that have nothing to do with the city, if I can, is the way I look at it.
Well, I don't recall, is there a provision? Because in life, there is always an exception or something you can never anticipate. Is there a provision in the policy that gives council the ability to address if it's not in the budget? You know, we have discretionary funds, et cetera, et cetera. But just so it appears above board, you know what I'm saying? That, well, you know, Robbie comes, says, you know, council, this has happened, this is really an important project, and we agree, and we give him the funding. We've denied Dave here, you know, because he wants the seven hundred fifty thousand for a barbecue. And, you know, you just get the consternation. And I think a provision like that, it is in there?
I mean, kind of.
Okay. See, I just don't know.
Number three, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you know, we probably wouldn't even be discussing this five years ago. You know, we've had a tremendous change in our revenue because of the sales tax. And that can benefit the city dramatically to help out other organizations that are very critical to our community. And that may need some special events that help with special events. Before, we didn't have the financial resources to even consider that. Now we do.
And that's true. And we also know too, that the pandemic has changed some things, and some of the funders that were out there for some outside organizations, they aren't there anymore. But these organizations do good works in our community. And so the City of Buchanan has, we want to be good neighbors to all of our organizations that do good works in our community, and we want to try to help them as we possibly can. We just, we're trying to get ahead of a potential snowball, because we do not want to, I mean, we do not want to just be a doormat that anybody who comes in automatically gets funding, and then we're neglecting any sort of city service because we're doling out so much money to outdoor, for outside entities. That, this is, this is an organizational safeguard for us and the organization. So that's...
So I'll bring that back, the final draft. I'll probably share it with you a few more times, because there has been some input with it, and then we can...
Yeah, I would welcome everybody to tell, provide Ambie input on this.
So Randy, this is on F four, for approval. Would it be your recommendation that we do not take action on this tonight? Okay, all right, that's fine.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, so the council has this as a draft. Please, between now and maybe the next meeting, we can put this on perhaps as a, as an actionable item again on the twenty-first meeting. But let's have the council report to Randy and to Ambie with any questions, concerns, additions, subtractions that might be of suggestion between now and then. Okay, we've talked about that. We have F seven and F eight, which I'd like for Ambie to discuss, our budget revisions. As you'll recall, the first meeting of the new fiscal year always requires a budget revision, and Ambie has that for us. Both of them are resolutions, so we will need a roll call vote for both once she has discussed the contents of the said resolutions.
Okay, I'll start with F seven, which is the coal tax revision. It's pretty cut and dry. We budgeted thirteen thousand dollars as a balance on hand, and we actually had forty-five thousand, or I mean, fifty-eight thousand four twenty-three. So we had forty-five thousand four hundred twenty-three dollars more than we estimated. And I always just put that in streets. Coal tax is used towards street projects. Jerry is building that fund up to let it be used for paving projects. So that's a simple one. Do you don't have any questions?
I'll move with you, please.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Sanders and a second by Mr. Thomas. All those who favorably signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries, that is F seven, the twenty-two oh four budget revision, number one, coal tax fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three. It is a resolution. I will defer to Mr. Sanders for the roll call for council.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders votes yes. Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Mr. Rigger?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
And Mrs. Buckford?
Yes.
Okay, the document will be circulated for your signatures. Next, F eight, we have the approval of the resolution for twenty-two oh five. This is budget revision number one, the general fund fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, so in that budget, like I stated in when I was giving you the balances, we ended the year with one million one hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars. We estimated a balance on hand of seven hundred and five thousand. Therefore, you have a, an amount of four hundred and fifty-two thousand four sixty-seven to budget into your general fund. So I'm going to go through what I identified, things that we needed to do, and then suggestions of where to place the funds. I'm going to start with revenues. So the Colonial Theater is beginning to ramp up a bit. There's some of the construction being completed. It's beginning to become usable. Donations, we had some more donors that were stepping forward, and now we're talking about possibly dressing rooms that maybe people want to sponsor. And First Energy's been really good to support the project as well as Arts Two-Six-Two-O-One and the BCT. So I had originally estimated ten thousand in donations, but I know I'm going to surpass that. So I estimated eighty-five. Yeah, so then also in rents, concessions, and tickets, they'll be doing some fundraising there, like t-shirts sales, so I estimated five thousand. We have nothing budgeted for it. We've got a FEMA grant generator, number two, that we didn't complete that work last year, last fiscal year, we're going to say, up to June thirtieth. So it's, what's left over on that is two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight forty-four. Now, on that, we have an expenditure, it's a hundred percent grant, so we have an expenditure to match that down in your revenues, or in your expenditure side. We also have the Gateway West Grant Program. That grant was awarded, that phase of that grant was awarded after the budget was done. So we're going to, it's an eighty percent, twenty percent match, that he pays twenty percent. The grant is two hundred and thirteen thousand six twenty-four, of which the city will pay forty-two thousand. So we will receive a hundred and seventy thousand eight ninety-nine in revenue on that grant. That's up in your revenues. The other item is, we had an arts and culture grant for the theater. We didn't get that drawed down last year. We're going to receive that this year for thirty-nine thousand dollars, so that revenue will come in. With the balance on hand and those estimated revenues, we will receive, the budget addition is one million twenty-eight thousand two hundred and ten dollars. So down in the expenditure side, there's some things identified we needed to work on to change. So we had a facade grant last year, and there were two applicants applied that did not get the work done in time to expense it, so I had to carry that over into this year. So I carried that five thousand dollars over into this year. Those have already been spoken for. Under four forty-four fifty-nine City Hall capital, we also have a retainage here to finish up the work at City Hall around the foundation. The contractor didn't get back in, so we could expense that. So I put that five thousand in there to expense when he finishes this work. Under seven fifty-three forty-one street materials, I had to add the twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars because the mowing of the city lots by Wanderscape was not in the original March budget. So I've got that in there, and we know we're going to expense to them twenty-one thousand six hundred in this budget for this year. Again, like I said, the grant for the Gateway West is in here. Under the Colonial Theater health insurance, the person, the managing director is, has a, will not require the health insurance that I had budgeted, so I reduced it by seven thousand dollars. I did put maintenance in there, four thousand, because we've got to repair a compressor on the roof of the theater for the AC system. The professional services, we had talked about using a consultant to help the manager with that. That's not been set yet, so I guesstimated twenty thousand. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's correct. I'm just kind of ballparking that one. Two thousand for insurance for the theater personnel. That's like workers' comp unemployment, those sort of things. Supplies and expenses, ten thousand. We needed a computer and items for the fundraising and supplies. We, again, we're starting up some work up there, and we need that. I did put, I asked Jerry about this, and I did put a hundred and fifty thousand in there for the ongoing construction in the theater and basement. Now, like I said, up here in the revenue side, we're going to be taking in a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars on revenues for the theater, and we're expensing a total of a hundred and seventy-nine. FEMA generator grant, and then that leaves a balance to be budgeted that I was going to put in council contingency of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand one forty-two for council's consideration. Now, just through discussions with personnel supervisors and council members and board members, I just noted some suggestions you might want to consider before you decide. And that, so we did not make any decisions on pay increases or pay adjustments for employees in this budget, so you may want to consider that. The other thing is paving projects. We have that in the coal tax, which is fifty-three thousand, but you may want to consider putting some money in paving if we get to that. Jerry would need those projects prioritized, though. He's not, he would rather have your input in that. And then I don't, yeah, I just kind of threw in there, we have a stalker project, so we don't know where we're going with that. But that's all for your consideration, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand one forty-two.
That's a lot more than we've ever had before, right? I mean, as far as council contingency.
Well, yes, I mean, at one time, there was a business that paid to back BNO one time, and then we got a large sum in at that time, but they expensed that pretty quickly.
Well, it looks good to me. I'm sure this is a scramble at the end of June, right?
Yeah, yes.
This is one of those times where you observe that we are, this is one blessed community. You go to municipal league functions and you hear stories about communities that are forced to cut and cut deep. We are fortunate, although this community is certainly not perfect, but we are fortunate to have problems we can solve. And this is not a problem. It would have been a problem if it would have been the opposite, if we were four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars under where we would have, where we thought we were going to be. But this is a good situation to be in. The city is doing well, and I have no doubt that we will, we will come up with intelligent, well-thought-out uses for the funding that has been raised for these projects.
With that, Mayor, you know, you've been discussing the signing of Revenue Review Committee.
It is in my, uh, thank you tonight. Yeah, we do need to, that's one of the ones I would challenge to meet quickly. So, and it's in the list this evening.
Ambie, I have a lot of questions, but I would prefer to defer those when I have an opportunity to sit down. I think that it would take too much time for me to ask the questions I have, but...
Come here tomorrow.
Yep, yep. I think we're, I appreciate what you have to say.
And Saturday and Sunday and every night and every morning.
Not last night.
Yeah, I do want to increase, to some degree each year, our rainy day fund. And I know, you know, you have to max it out at a certain, can't go beyond a certain point.
And we're getting close.
But I think, well, we're not too close yet, but we're getting there, Robbie. But I do think that's something we should keep our minds active with and put some money in each year into that, if we can, and that's important.
The one account that Ambie and I have discussed several times is that the sales tax account does not have a cap on it, whereas the municipal stabilization fund does have a designated cap on it from, that's part of state code. The sales tax account does not, so that is something to consider as well. Is there any discussion further on the resolution that... Is there any discussion further on the resolution that Ambi has presented in front of us before I ask for a motion and a, and a vote? Okay, I would entertain a motion that we approve the budget revision 05, 2022, 05, budget revision number one, general fund 2022, 2023 as presented.
So move.
Motion by Jack, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Randy, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Likes on opposed, motion carries. And this is also a resolution, and so Mr. Sanders, if you would, do the roll call.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Rylance?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, yes, Mr. Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Rigor?
Yes.
Ms. McCauley?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckle?
Yes.
You can answer.
Okay, thank you. Finally, Ambi, F9 is listed under your name, so let's talk about the approval to participate and accept the DEP's Reclamation of Abandoned and Dilapidated Properties program.
Yes, so probably mid to end, end of June, I got a call from the West Virginia DEP, John King notified me that the city of Buchanan is eligible to apply for reimbursement grant of up to $100,000 to be used in a 12-month period. I think he mentioned Callie Sam's name, so I think she kind of helped us get noticed. These programs, it's a pilot program that they want us to participate in, and it's a pilot program for the DEP's Reclamation of Abandoned and Dilapidated Properties program. Buchanan was one of 22 communities selected to participate because we have an existing program that deals with abandoned and dilapidated structures. So right now, our program kind of consists of housing enforcement, what we've done is select properties that are coming up for tax sales, we go to the tax sale, bid on the properties and then we set on them for 18 months, waiting for them to go through all the notification processes, and then when we, we acquire them, then we can, we get them evaluated, determine if they're worth, you, worth, you know, keeping or tearing down, often cases that they're, they need tore down. So we've actually got a few on the burner right now waiting, so those would be in that. And then sometimes, on a rare occasion, a property owner will turn them over to us and they're in pretty poor condition and we have to get the asbestos inspections, we use our staff to help rent equipment and get it tore down. So they solve, our program, how we, how we did it was affordable, we crossed all the Ts, made sure that it was being handled properly, and then we'll turn around and if possible, sell the property so it goes back into the tax base. The mayor, they've asked for the mayor and maybe another representative to go attend the pre-grant awards meeting at DEP's headquarters on July 13th. Are you going to that, Mayor?
Sure, why not?
Is that, is that $100,000 per year?
Yeah, for, in a 12-month period, we'd have to use it in 12-month period, and if we don't use it, of course, then it'll go back into their account, but we, it's reimbursable as we do the expenses, they will reimburse us for it.
But it's probably going to be done every year.
Well, it's a pilot program, so I suppose if it's successful, yes, it'll be, so, you know, we do have a few properties that need some attention.
I think, I think we should, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Thomas and second by Mr. Rylance, any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ambi.
Where's the meeting, Charleston? Ambi?
Yes, it's at the DEP headquarters, July 13th.
13th or 14th?
13th.
Oh, okay. It's Wednesday, okay.
Friday?
No, it's Wednesday, okay. Chief Kimball, City Fire Department, good evening.
Does anybody need to stand up and stretch? Because I do. In your old packet, good evening, everybody, in your old packet, you'll have our monthly activity at the Buchanan Fire Department, year-to-date through May, the month of activity is from May, also in your packet, if you look down the first two pages, it'll have the month of May's responses for each individual, and then the second page will be the total for the year. I want to give a shout out to many of our volunteers who are making, you know, 15, 20% of these calls, and that's, when you look at 20% of the call volume we have, that's 100 calls in, in five months, that these men and women are making for our community and spending time not with their families, so I want to give a shout out to them. Last week, I met with the accreditation review board and presented a gap report, which is going to be an annual thing. That gap report represents each shift, so we have three shifts at the fire department, A, B, and C, and basically takes three types of calls, all fires, all car wrecks with injuries or entrapment, and cardiac arrest or unresponsive calls. And I broke those down into timelines, the 90 percentiles of how long it takes the 911 center to take the call, the 90th percentile of how long it takes for our crews to respond to the truck and get out the door, and the 90th percentile from leaving the door to getting on scene, and I presented that, having, I'm going to meet with each shift now and go over improvement, an improvement plan, how can we gain a few seconds? I've met with the 911 director, Dole Cutright, actually, we've talked about, they do a quality assurance on all fire calls with their call, call takers, I asked him to allow us to put a representative from the fire department on that QA process, we want to make sure all the questions are being asked that need to be asked, that they need to be asked in a timely manner, how can we speed the process up? I played a couple audio 911 tapes, some of them get kind of lengthy, so that's things that the accreditation process works on, how do we improve, how do we get almost perfect, you know, and that's, that's not only the fire department, but every agency we work with, so it's good stuff. Along with that, we were talking about the district mapping, that we got our fire district approved by the State Fire Commission back in January, that is still not in place, so the, the 911 center is still taking calls and having to go through a flip chart to find out which fire department is the proper fire department. So that is part of the time consumption that we're trying to work on. So I met with the mayor and we discussed the possibilities, if we can't get, if the whole county's done, if we could get the Buchanan Fire Department district put in place, because I, you know, I'm on a timeline, I'm trying to get some good data and I can't get good data until we get the process in place. So maybe reaching out to Region 7 to do some overlay on some GIS stuff for us. We have continually been working on recruitment activity, you know, we worked with the high school program, the marketing class, it was a good time, we haven't had a lot of results from that, I did present to a Lewis County resident that hit our QR code, some fire departments that that person could call and try to join. We're also, we're going to be attending Wesland's freshman orientation and Bobcat Days to go over, we do have an active opening for our live-in program for anybody that wants to volunteer as they come in, so that, times are coming up in August, we'll be doing that. Been working with the Wamsby Committee on Safety Procedures, Chief Gregory and I and Mr. Sanders and a few others, this could be a big process, we're getting down to the nuts and bolts of the program and figuring out what we're going to have to do, so that's good times. Training opportunities that are coming up, I have the city attorney working on a MOU with Community Care West Virginia, the Moose will be vacated, we will be able to do some extensive training in it, that's going to be a great time, it's kind of like the, when Mr. McCauley set us up over at the college with the dorms, I mean, not very often you get to play in those type of buildings and this can be a great opportunity. Our new fireman you saw here tonight, this is actually his second week, he's getting pounded with a lot of training, he's, he's a young man, he's very strong, he's, he's learning a lot real quick, so. Also, in January, we're going to have the Country Roads Fire Convention, it's coming up, I got Joey Backsa, Captain Backsa and Captain Lynn Backsa are working on that, we're going to have a lot of people coming in to do presentations, so that's going to be some good training, these are national instructors from all over the country, we're looking for a big turnout, actually, we had somebody register from Alaska already, some people from Virginia, so, so we've got some people coming in, in January, so, good stuff. Mayor, if you would, if it's okay, the radio frequency?
Mm-hmm, I was hoping you would talk to us about that.
Yes. In your, in your packet, there's a MOU agreement between the city and OEM or Homeland Security. Throughout the years, the city of Buchanan has always maintained the FCC license for the fire departments, it's 45.280 and then there's a link to a repeater and all this, well, nobody really knew who owned the tower equipment and everything, so a few years back, there was a, the system went down and the county put money into it and they started maintaining it. This is just a, an agreement that, that should have been made years ago between us and the county, that we, the city of Buchanan will maintain the license and they will maintain and keep up on the tower and the radio, because every fire department in the county uses that as a dispatch frequency at this point.
And this is the tower on Tomlinville Road?
Yes. So, and that's what that consists of, there's no real monetary other than what we normally have been doing, Derek Long and I have been working on this, I put it to Tom, he checked it out, as far as lawyer lingo goes, he was all right with it and I don't see any problems with it, so.
Okay, well, certainly we want to maintain the frequencies, and I think we're going to, we're going to get into the deal here, so.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion that we approve the request to, well, the member of understanding, I should say, with the city of Buchanan and the Upstate County Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to maintain the FCC license on the tower.
Second.
We have a motion by Pam, a second by Randy, any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, we'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, motion carries.
Anybody have any questions?
Ladder trucks should be coming home soon.
Hopefully next week, it did have, it's annual inspection, while it's up there, the company, there's a couple of things they're going to send down that we got to look at, but they did repair the rear end damage, so I'll have itemized stuff when, when they bring it back, so.
I think, and we could email this out to council, Captain, Lieutenant Backsa, Captain Backsa, sorry, yeah, that was, that was Lynn, that's Joey, getting them confused, Joey Backsa is going to be discussing tomorrow about 10 o'clock in the morning, I believe, our time, the May Day call that was put out when the building fire took place here on Main Street.
I believe it's noon.
Mountain time.
Mountain time, so two here?
Oh, that's right, two here, yeah, okay, 2:00 in the afternoon here. And so if anybody wants to, to listen to what he had to say and his experiences with being in that building when the May Day call was put out, I'm sure it would be very interesting, so we can put that link out.
Where's it going to be talking about that online, what it looks like?
Uh, let me, let me send it to the trauma page.
I saw that on the center, I thought that would be interesting.
So. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Kimball at the City Fire Department?
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, have a good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, City Attorney Tom O'Neill is absent this evening, he had a church function up on Chief Mountain, and if anybody's ever been over Chief Mountain, there is no cell phone service because you're entering Pocahontas County and that's the, that's the natural dead zone up that way, so he is getting some fresh mountain air, so he'll return to us next council meeting. So we'll go down to correspondence and information, and D1, 2, and 3 are the oaths of office that we administered, one for Mr. David Thomas, one for Mr. David McCauley, and one for Mr. Randall Sanders. So enjoyed that last Friday, and then we've got the report of the cat and dog activities from the Upstate County Commission for May 2012, 2012, 2022, trying to, just trying to reverse a little bit. Letter agreement, city of Buchanan, Upstate County Board of Education to tear down 9 East Victoria Street, if you recall, we discussed that when Dr. Stankis was here in the beginning of June to help them with expanding the play area for Buchanan Academy Elementary School. We've got public relations release from Mr. Sanders, Buchanan Independence Day celebration, the fireworks were fantastic, everybody enjoyed the fireworks, 40 minutes is amazing, we, we had a great, great show, and the city of Buchanan put that on in conjunction with Festival Fridays with Create Buchanan, there was a lot of people downtown for that, it was a beautiful evening, so thank you to the council for the allocation of funds for that, the community really, really enjoyed the fireworks and, and I certainly did as a photographer, so, so that, that was a great show. We have a FOIA request, as we typically do from this group, Smart Procure, they, they'd like for some PO vendor information from 39, 2022 to current, and then we have a special session of the city council on July 12th at 1:30, we talked about this, this is the probationary police officer interviews, we set that time and date back in June when you all were here and we, we sat here and talked about that being the date that everybody could, could be available, so please put, make sure that that is on your calendar.
What's the time?
1:30 in the afternoon. Under the consent agenda, we've got the approval of the minutes from June 16th, approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of the payment of bills, and then the two requests that we discussed earlier, E4 and E5, the request from Congressman Alex Mooney's office for the table to be set up in front of Andrex Jewelers on Main Street and the lease renewal agreement for the Buchanan River Public Access Site that we discussed under Ambi's report. I'd, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rigor, a second by Mr. Rylance, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, motion carries. Okay, we have completed 1, 2, and 3, we are down to F4, and that is the approval, we don't need that, we've talked about F4, we are down to F5, I apologize, this is the approval of the use of City Hall space for the Wamsby headquarters, July 17 through 24. For F5 and F6, I am going to defer to Mr. Sanders to walk us through his thoughts and requests to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we, as Chief Kimball mentioned, we have been having regular meetings with our security team, Chief, can you?
He's got a call.
Oh, okay.
About Weston.
Oh, go, go, okay. All right, I'm just going to have him weigh in on this, but in the course of our security meetings, and they've been very insightful, and they've been handled by Chief Gregory and Chief Kimball, and in attendance has been Steve Wykoff, who's the Director of Homeland Security for the area now, Derek Long, Jim Valinson is assisting us as a volunteer and he's kind of taking the lead on a lot of these matters, but it was highly recommended that we have one area designated as our, our headquarters during the event itself, where communications equipments can be established, Homeland, Department of Homeland Security or Office of Emergency Management, whichever acronym we, we might need to use for that, Mr. Wykoff said that they would build, they would provide the communication systems necessary to link all the first responders for the emergency situations, we'll be able to contact our street department, all the city departments and so forth to keep things moving smoothly, but it will be manned pretty much 24/7 during that July 17th to July 24th time period while the event is taking place, and we like to use the basement here at City Hall for that. We've been clearing out some areas, we have a lot of the Colonial Arts Center, equipment was stored down there, we moved that out now for the pre-installation prep, so we do have some space that we could use down there, it is a very secure area and it is an area that's kind of off from the public and so forth, but I'm seeking council's approval for us to use that space to set up for the week of Wamsby, July 17 through the 24th, that means we'll have to go in a little bit ahead of that to set things up and obviously to get it prepared properly. But, but tonight I'm requesting council approval for us to utilize that space in the basement as the headquarters for Wamsby 2023.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Thomas, second by Mr. Rylance, is there any further discussion on the, on the question? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes on opposed, motion carries.
I'll abstain because I'm the president of that.
Okay, and F6, sir?
Yes, let me write this down, sir.
I mean, you can't talk in two guns. I mean, you can't talk and chew gum at the same time?
Yes, I can. Usually swallow the gum. All right. All right, the second thing is, you know, when we're looking at some of the two big parades, Wednesday, we'll have a March to the Flame, and Saturday, we'll have the Parade of Nations, which, by the way, will have more international groups in this parade than any other parade in the country that year, probably the world that year, because we'll have so many various countries represented in that parade.
How many things you'll have?
Well, we're hoping, you know, we're hoping that, countries, I'm not sure, I'd have to go back and double check. I'm thinking, I'm not sure. Let me review.
Sure.
Right now, we have 46 bands have applied from various countries, some duplications and so forth, but we're now vetting them. We're going through a lot of the process, but I know we'll have Honduras, we'll have El Salvador, we'll have Germany, we'll have Poland, we'll have, you know, Canada for sure, so I can report on that a little bit later. What's that? Okay. So, anyway, so in looking at the security aspects of it, and the street closures that will need to take place, you know, we do need to man these areas with reliable, solid individuals. For those two main parades, I'm asking council's approval that we ask some of our employees to serve in those capacities for those two parades. That would mean that we'd be pulling from our pool of 90 employees, and we would put in requests through the supervisors. We've already alerted the supervisors of all departments of these dates, and then we'll request that they be very cautious about extending vacation during that time, so we have all hands on deck. Now, obviously, all of those services have to be covered by our employees, we get to sanitary, the water, police, fire, you know, all of those areas, but we would be, I am asking council's approval to be able to extend an opportunity to those employees to put in some extra hours to man those key positions, and it'll achieve two very important aspects. We'll have reliable people at key positions who aren't your normal volunteers who may or may not show up. We will be able to provide them proper training. There are three aspects, proper training before these events, so that they're well-versed in what their responsibilities are, and three, they'll be ambassadors of goodwill to our visitors from around the world. No one will sell the city better than our own employees or our own family members. So, they'll be coming in direct contact with these visitors and participants, and I think we could all rest easier if we knew we had a good, reliable force out there, and none better than the employees in here in the City of Buchanan.
Could you use former employees too?
Yeah, I think so, sure. Yeah, we're going to be reaching out for volunteers. There's going to be another aspect of volunteers, but when we put people in those key positions, we must know they're going to be there. We have to know they're going to show up. We have to know they have proper training, and that training will be provided by Chief Gregory, Chief Kimball, you know, our force, and we'll do that in the safety complex more than likely, so.
Randy, what do you anticipate the time for the Wednesday parade?
At 3:00 PM, Wednesday parade. It'll be a shorter parade because it's only going to feature the bands and some dignitaries. There's not going to be any novelty units in that parade. It's just going to basically be featuring the bands themselves marching the parade route, ending up, we're going to extend the parade route on that one all the way to the campus because they'll be marching to the lighting of the flame for the ceremonies, opening ceremonies.
So, they want my seraphine playing music down?
Oh, they'll be performing. No, 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 no. They'll absolutely be performing from start to finish in the Wednesday parade, and then the Parade of Nations on Saturday will begin at noon. We tried to back it up a little bit earlier to, because we have a final competition at night, it will start at noon, and it will feature all of the bands, it'll feature visiting bands that are competing, some feature bands. We have some great announcements coming up. It'll have folks, it'll have novelty units from across the country, and a lot of participation from various groups and various attractions. Any other questions?
One other question. How much, how much time are you anticipating for the workers to be?
Remember the hours that we?
I think estimated that it probably cost about $11,000 to $12,000 each day.
Yeah, so if you've known with the top tier, top tier paid employee, about $11,000, $12,000 per day.
Yeah, it was very, I was estimating very.
Right.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Second.
And a motion by Pam, a second by David McCauley. I have to differentiate the Davids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed, motion carries.
And I'll stay for that as well.
Okay. F10, normally, we defer to our city attorney for this, but this is a second reading, so I think, think I might be able to handle it, and if I can't, guess what? We have an attorney right here on council, so if you recall, council, we have ordinance 459 in front of us. It is a, it is a requirement by the state of West Virginia to adopt State of West Virginia Building Code. It's, we're essentially a pass-through at this point, and we have to typically do this from time and time again when the state hands down new legislation that cities have to adopt. So, just to, just to keep with consistency, stake, I would ask for Mr. McCauley to read the ordinance by caption and answer any questions that the council members might have.
Wow, this is going back like 40 years.
It's like riding a bike, you don't forget.
You're right. Ordinance number 459 of the City of Buchanan, and ordinance amending prior ordinances of the City of Buchanan by providing for the adoption of the West Virginia State Building Code set forth and defined by Title 87, Series 4 of the Code of State Rules as amended and declaring an emergency.
Like a pro.
We, yes, he did. Thank you, Mr. McCauley. We passed this unanimously on first reading. I'd entertain a motion that we go ahead and pass this on second reading to finish it out.
And these codes are already, they're already in effect now?
Yes, yeah.
I'll make a motion for this.
All right, Mr. Thomas has motioned, Mr. Rigger has seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes, sign opposed, motion carries.
I still think events should do a book report on each edition.
I think that would be great.
I think, I think you and he should meet at Stone Tire and have that conducted.
You know, when I was, when I was in elementary school, I used to cringe hearing the word "book report." Okay. Last line item for this evening is the ever-so-popular list of appointments. There, I will go ahead and tell you, there are very, very, very few changes in here. And also, I need to tell you that there are some that I am holding off on until next meeting because I'm still waiting on some, well, I was looking for my email that Teresa sent me that I was going to tell you all which ones it was that I was going to omit for the evening. I can't seem to find that right this second, but anyway, there's, there's some that I'm waiting on some answers back from to try to, and one of those is the Parks and Recreation Board because it is new. We don't have that, but that will be done by the 21st meeting, so there's just a couple that I don't have answers back from yet, and so I would ask that we break this up a little bit, but we are doing the lion's share tonight. Now, I want to, in previous meetings, I've been asked to each, each section to take a motion and a vote on it. What do you want to do? Do you want me to go through this entire thing, and you motion and approve the entire thing, or do you want to go section by section? How would, how would the council like to proceed?
What do you prefer to do?
I prefer to read the whole thing and let you all vote on it as one big line item, because I'm, because like I said, there's really no, there's no major changes and there's no big surprises.
Can you talk to everybody?
Mm-hmm. So, is that okay, or do you want to go section by section? I don't, it's up to you.
Oh, read the whole thing.
Read the whole thing, all right. Okay. We'll get my singing voice out. All right, City of Buchanan Appointments Fiscal Year 2022-2023. Assistant City Recorder, Ambie Jenkins; Director of Finance and Administration, Ambie Jenkins; Director of Public Works, Jerry Arnold; Addressing Officer, Jerry Arnold; Chief of City Police, Matt Gregory; Chief of City Fire Department, J.B. Kimball; City Engineer, Jay Holland; Building Code and Enforcement Officer, Vincent Smith; City Attorney, Tom O'Neill; City Horticulturist, Dixie Green; Municipal Court Judge, Ellen Eckert; City Electrical Inspector, Vincent Smith; Section 504 Compliance Officer, which is the ADA side of things, Brad Hawkins; SYCC Director, Deborah Brockman; Flood Plane Manager and CRS Coordinator, Jay Holland; City Technology Officer, Rich Clemmons; and Information Coordinator, Randy Sanders; Grant Rider, Region 7, that's who we've decided to go to, we pay dues to that organization anyway; City Human Resources Manager, Ambie Jenkins; Water Department Superintendent, Kelly Arnold; Waste Department Superintendent, Jerry Arnold; Sanitary Department Superintendent, Ethan Croston; Street Department Parks and Parks Superintendent, Brad Hawkins; Water Board, I serve as Chair by Charter of all three of the, or all four of these next sections, so I will leave myself out; Don Nestor, Araz Rizzo, David McCauley, David Thomas, and City Recorder on the Water Board; Waste Board, Scott Randall, C.J. Rylands, and City Recorder; Sanitary Board, Mitch Shaw, Philip Loftus, City Recorder; Consultant of Public Works, City Recorder, Pam Buckle, Jack Rigger, Nancy Show, Mark Waldo; Police Civil Service, Carl Collinich, Jerry Henderson, Mark Spencer, City Recorder; Fire Civil Service, Lenora Wentz, Bob Parker, Abigail Benjamin, City Recorder; Zoning Board of Appeals, Ann Levisay, Tim Reese, Jenny Duran, Dean Everett, Corey Rozell; Housing Enforcement Board, I'm the Chair, Jay Holland, City Engineer, Dave Thomas, Sue McKissick from the Upstate County Health Department, Vincent Smith, Building Code and Enforcement Officer, J.B. Kimball, City Fire Chief; Planning Commission, Sarah Aelstock, Sarah St. Clair, Mike Sharpliski, Kelly Tierney, Rich Clemmons, Curtis Wilkerson, Susan Alloy, Vincent Smith, C.J. Rylands, City Recorder; Animal Care and Control Commission, Mayor is the Chair, Upstate Louis Animal Control Facility Rep, Elisa Linger; Upstate County Resident, Allison Clausen Whitehair; Upstate County Resident, Robin Keough; Upstate County Resident, Lisa Critchfield; and Upstate County Veterinarian, Tanya Pickens; the DNR is an ex officio officer, the Upstate County Dog Warden is a resource, the City Clerk, City Recorder, City Clerk is a member, City Attorney, and the Animal Shelter all have non-voting members; Colonial Arts Center Board, Randy Sanders, Elisa Lively, Keith Buchanan, Eric Collinich, and John Walz; Charles Gibson Library, by the way, Kathy is here, she is the librarian. Everybody say hi to Kathy. Hi, Kathy. The city does appoint the library board, although we do not oversee the funding of the library. It is a, it is a city library, but we are a pass-through, the city has a library levy, and that's, and then the board manages that funding and then supports the library. Brooke Scott, Brett Miller, Charlotte Glitch Rainey, Kelly Tierney, Beth Post; Region 7 Planning and Development, Mayor; Upstate County Recreation Board, Brandon Williams, Dennis Cortez; Upstate County Development Authority Board of Directors Executive Committee, David Thomas; Upstate County Board of Health, Susie Colons Talbot, Dr. John Mathias; Upstate County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Randy Sanders, Jennifer Fluke; Airport Authority, Mike Ruffing, Brian Huffman, and Jay Holland. Hi, Mike. Everybody say hi to Mike.
Hi.
He has problem solvers consultants, and he is also the leader that's getting us toward leadership Upstate, so that the city has supported. So, wanted you to put a face with the name. Housing Authority, Jerry Wilfong, Rose Clutter, Kitten Lee, Michael Levisay, Catherine Fry; Armory Managerial Committee, Director of Finance, Ambie Jenkins; Chamber of Commerce Representative, Director of Finance, Ambie Jenkins; Upstate County Citizen, Senior Citizens Opportunity Board, Tim Rock; Council Committees, Finance is all council members, ordinance is all council members, Health is Mayor, Council Member, David Thomas; Fire is all council members, Police is all council members, and Audit Procurement is appointed at each audit; General Fund Revenue Review Committee, myself as Mayor, Councilman Jack Rigger, Councilman David Thomas, Ambie Jenkins, Barb Henkel, and Scott Randall; Calea Policy Review Committee, this is for City Police, Chief of City Police, Matt Gregory, Lieutenant Doug Lowden, Chief J.B. Kimball, City Fire Department, myself as Mayor, Councilman C.J. Rylands, Jeff Harvey, Ambie Jenkins, City Attorney, Tom O'Neill, Randy Sanders; CFI-A Policy Review Committee, Buchanan City Police Chief, Matt Gregory, City Fire Chief, J.B. Kimball, Mayor, Council Member, C.J. Rylands, Jeff Harvey, Ambie Jenkins, City Attorney, Tom O'Neill, Captain Joey Baxa, Upstate County Commission, Sam Nolte, Randy Sanders; Technology Committee, Jay Holland, Jerry Arnold, Ambie Jenkins, Rich Clemmons, Phil Loftus, Duane Squires, Seth Hoffman, Randy Sanders; Wamsby Host Committee, Randy Sanders, Elisa Lively, Laura Meadows, Ambie Jenkins, Barb Henkel; Other Committees and Appointments, Ethan Croston is Buchanan Water, is Buchanan River Watershed Association Representative; Buchanan Dog Park Committee, Lisa Critchfield, Brooke Scott, Brad Hawkins, Jerry Arnold, Elisa Linger, Robin Keough, Allison Whitehair, Jenny Dixon; SYCC Capital Campaign and Steering Committee, previously, that was the mayor, and I think that was mostly because of who it was, but I have asked David McCauley to chair that and to develop his own, or develop a committee that can work with him for the Capital Campaign for Stockard Youth Center, since the lion's share, aka 99% of the funds raised by Stockard Youth Capital Campaign to this point have been raised by now council member David McCauley. Downtown Seasonal Development Committee, Pam Buckle is Chair, Amanda Hayes, Nancy Show, Deborah Brockman, and Jerry Arnold. Okay.
Make sure you read that, please.
Can you do that again one more time?
Okay.
You missed a little bit of that.
I'm going to let Dave read them.
Which Dave?
I'll let you read them.
You memorized them all, didn't you?
Does anybody have any questions or comments on the appointment list thus far? Please keep in mind that we have a few others to go through next time. Yes, and the reason for that is, is that Stockard, I have asked for a reduction in the number of board members, so that I needed to get from Stockard first to see if that was going to be agreed upon before I went and did anything, because if it doesn't, if the reduction is approved, we don't really need to change anything, because we've had some resignations that we just haven't replaced.
And Parks and Recreation.
And Parks and Recreation, yes. So.
Robbie, I want to mention, I'm not sure what number we had decided, but I think the ordinance says that we have to have nine people.
It has to come from council, or it has to come from Stockard to refer to council and ordinance, a change in the ordinance. Yes, that's why we didn't, we haven't done this yet. It has to go through a little bit of a process before we can get that completed, and I will defer to Tom O'Neill and to Dave McCauley to help us with that. Dave knows it like the back of his hand, Tom can help as well with drafting the ordinance to make that a board of seven. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the board, the committee members and board members that I have presented to you this evening? Motion by Pam, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jack, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Likes, sign opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you. Okay. Board, I'm sorry, board member, was still in Waste Board voting this morning. Comments and announcements from city council members? We will begin with Mrs. Pamela Buckle.
First, I want to welcome back our Dave McCauley to the council, being counsel, and Randy Sanders, and our oldest.
I'll enjoy writing that in a minute.
But also, I want to invite everybody, community, to please drive by and walk by and look at our new rendition of Stockard Youth and Community Center. It's up on that piece of property we bought across from City Hall, and if anybody has any money, they could. any money they could hand over to help it make, help us make it a reality sooner, and it'd be, it's for the whole community, it's not just for kids, it'll be for adults, and everybody can use that property, so hopefully we get that ground broke on that in the next few months, that's what we're all hoping for, we've wanted this for years and years and years, so.
Yeah. Thanks Pam. C.J.
I'm good.
Dave Thomas.
I want to welcome David McCauley to the council, and looking forward to working with him. And Randy, again, as the Recorder. I concur, Robbie, in regard to the fireworks that the city put on last Friday, but I do have a concern about individuals within the community that let fireworks off, you know, I got good ears, but I've had a lot of phone calls over the last four or five days about people that seem to disregard their neighbors and have been letting fireworks on every day for five or six, seven days. And it's very distressing to some people that have post-traumatic stress issues, and also for animals, for dogs and cats, and the other little creatures we have in our properties, whether it's chipmunks or squirrels or the birds and so forth. And we did pass ordinances a few years ago that gives you a timeline when you should and when you should not, and I think people should observe those timelines and treat their neighbors better, also treat our nature of creatures better, too. And I also want to thank the Fredbrook Garden Club. They consider being a member, they go out there and they help unify the city by doing a lot of pulling weeds and so forth, and you can join for a $25 annual membership. And everybody have a great weekend.
Thanks Dave. Jack?
I've got a couple. Congrats on the, to the new firemen, I think that's tremendous, and hope we bring in some volunteers. Robin Oldacre, Relay for Life, just so you know, another 1976 graduate, and the class of 1976 is celebrating its 45-plus-one reunion this weekend. If the weather's nice tomorrow, you'll see our canopy. Ambie's part of that, too, and Randy.
Uh-oh.
Surrounded.
And I think Mr. McCauley's a 76 grad, we're taking over.
Yeah.
Alright.
But I'm younger than both of the others.
Yeah.
Respect your elders over there.
But, you know, it's tremendous, and it's gonna be good to have the old grads back in Buchanan. Do we have them come, did someone come from Alaska, Randy?
Did somebody come from Alaska?
I thought, I know we have California and Hawaii, but I thought we heard.
That's coming to the training center, huh?
I came to hear Robbie read the committee list, but Dixie, it's interesting, and Ambie mentioned the flowers. We're driving through town, I keep telling my wife, at the next council meeting, I need to commend Dixie for the beautiful flowers. The foliage looks as nice as it ever has, and she's doing a tremendous job, and the investment into that new greenhouse, all you have to do is walk up and down the street, the intersections up around West Virginia Wesleyan College, it's just spectacular. And pat on the back to that crew, that's, that's for sure. Randy, Wamsby, good job, and, am I speaking loud enough, David, seeing you here?
Yeah, what year is your graduate?
I'm finished.
1976.
Seventy-six.
Damn, you guys are young.
Thanks, Jack.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCauley, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Well, as I remarked the last Friday when I was being sworn in again, it's, some of these projects which we've managed to continue to see flourish are like my kids, they're like my babies, whether it's the Colonial or the Stockard Project, or Trader's Alley or Jopon, you name it, it's, it's great to see these things continuing to proceed. I was reading the minutes from the last meeting, and I think Mr. Rylands had requested in advance of any formal approval on the Stockard layout, that maybe we have some sort of town hall meeting or get the word out to organizations. Has there been any thought given as to a possible date for that, and is that something that we might be able to try to set during the next couple of weeks?
We discussed that at the Stockard Community, Stockard Youth and Community Center Board meeting today, David, and the request was made for Don Nestor, Pam Bucklew, and C.J. Rylands to coordinate an effort to get that meeting set up sometime in August, so that we give people plenty of time, and it was recommended that we hold it at the safety complex, so that folks may feel more comfortable in a more, in a community environment instead of here. And also for the three of them to have a goal of contacting all of the organizations within the community that they will serve, and ask for at least one representative from that organization to be assigned to come to that meeting, plus reach out to all the businesses, plus reaching out to the citizens, we'll do public relations, and we'll just make a really concerted effort to get as bigger group there as possible at that one community meeting, which will invite Mr. Bill, too, to present those proposals and have an open discussion, you know, concerning the plan.
I think we should ask the County Commission to attend that also, I think they would be pretty happy.
Be happy to invite them, yeah.
The more the merrier.
Yeah.
I just want to remind everyone, Stockard is more than just a building, whether it's the old building or whether it's the new one that we want to see constructed, it is a concept. And we've heard so many ideas over the years as to what can happen within the buildings and around the buildings. You know, Pam has been mentioning, gosh, ever since she came aboard council 20 years ago, about during the wintertime having a portable skate rink. I think we ought to really start thinking outside the box about things like that, and a climbing wall, and, you know, a splash pad, and possibly a miniature golf course, and all those different little things that we've talked about for years. There's opportunities around Stockard that we can really, we're never going to be one of those 70, 80 million dollar places like the Bridge up in Bridgeport, or like Anchor Park up there in Morgantown, that's not going to happen, we don't have that kind of a tax base, but we can still have something for everybody. I promised some young friends that I made here in the last couple of three months, Sam Nolte's son, Joey, and Peyton Adams, they came to see me, it was just like the day after Election Day, they wanted to talk to somebody about a skate park. And I told them that I would be their ally and advocate, and we would try to see what we could do in the future to make something come to pass in that regard. Robbie and I have talked about that, too, so it's, it's great to be back, looking forward to all kinds of good things with the crew that I obviously already know, and thanks for letting me be here.
Sure. Thank you, David, and welcome aboard again. Mr. Sanders.
Well, I'll be, I'll be very brief. Congratulations, Mr. Thomas, for returning to council. Mr. McCauley, congratulations for being on council, returning to the table. Look forward to working with both of you, I appreciate those who voted for me and supported me in my election to return and be here for four more years. Also, want to congratulate the three employees who retired, two have already retired, and Kathy Holt, Kathy will retire officially tomorrow, and what a legacy they've left, it's really a tribute that they've been here for the collective amount of years that they have been, it's going to be very hard to replace those types of folks, I'm sure that we will, and we'll have a strong force moving forward, but I think we need to tip our hat to all of, all three of those individuals that's already been mentioned for the years of service to Buchanan, and I'm going to wrap it up with that.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I had the pleasure on Monday of traveling to Ripley, West Virginia, to support our Strawberry Festival royalty in the largest small-town 4th of July celebration in the country. Ripley hosts that every year, and it's pretty cool. And I've been down there a few, a few times, I know a lot of good people in Ripley, but I'm gonna tell you something. Every time somebody said, oh, he's from Buchanan, the Strawberry Festival, oh, your town is beautiful, so we really are well-known around the state for having the first-class event that we do with Strawberry Festival, and how beautiful this community is, and we can't say that enough. I know that we sit here and we, we pinpoint the issues that we have, and that we, we talk about the, you know, the few weeds here and there, and the few broken windows here and there around, but this community is tremendously blessed and in a great position, and we, we have, we have, we have all the tools we need to be the very best community, not only in West Virginia, but, but in, in our region, throughout the southeastern United States, we are, we are one heck of a great place, and we've got good people that are putting us there and continue to work hard. I'm very proud of our council, I, I think we've got a great group of folks here that are all dedicated to being, to being the future we want to see in this community, and, you know, David said that he's bringing youth back to the council, it's, you know, he, he's, I, I won't, I won't.
I trust God, Dave, I don't want to get too much.
He's, he's the psychic, anyways. So, but, so I, I said it, and I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't get too many jabs, but, so I, I'm very, I'm very pleased with the work that we have done as a group, I'm pleased, I'm pleased to be part of this group, and I know that we've got a lot of good work up ahead, so thanks to everybody for everything they do, all of our employees, Dixie for the flowers, our Director of Finance and Administration for closing up the books over the last couple of weeks and getting us going with a windfall of, of an opportunity going into the, to the new year, so she does a fantastic job, I wish she would go home a few, for a few hours each day.
Can we force her to take a vacation?
I know, I just wish we could force her to go home at night, but that's, that's tough to do, so, but, yeah, I, I come in here on a Sunday morning to do something, I come in here on a, on a Saturday night to do something, I come in here Sunday evening, and she's, she's always here, so, but, and that's, as Mr. Sanders alluded to, that's, that's why this organization is in the shape it's in, we have very, we have great dedicated employees that give their all for this community and the people that live here every day, so very, very fortunate to have those, and I'm looking forward to what the Revenue Review Committee comes back with as a, as what we can do to reward our, our employees for, for the work that they do. These are tough times economically, it, it's hitting everybody, especially those who are on the front lines working for this community, and I want to make sure that we, we are treating our employees with the very best that we possibly can. So, with that, at 9:30, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
To move.
Alright, thanks, everybody, have a great weekend.